So for me, it's been a wonderful day. And I'll have some just very brief closing remarks at the end. But I'd say that we're capping off the day with a various, very special occasion. And it's my great honor to introduce a special guest, a friend of the IOM, and a personal friend. So as you know, I said earlier this morning that IOM has a close relationship with the VA. I can cite you some examples of what we do with Veterans Affairs, particularly in the area of health. And so, we feel very close that we are also in the service of the nation, and service, of course, of the vets who give so much to this country. Now, I said this morning that we were founded, in fact, by Abraham Lincoln and the Congress in 1863. At the time, the creation of National Cancer Science to mobilize scholars of our country to help the nation to fight the Civil War. When I visited Secretary McDonald's office about a month ago, I was struck by the statues and the paintings of Lincoln. Now, that's clearly my ignorance, not knowing the history. Bob was very quick to point out to me about our common heritage. In fact, it was Lincoln in the second inaugural speech coined the VA motto, and I quote, "To care for him who shall have borne the battle and for his widow and his orphan," end of quote. Both our organizations share the aspirations of the 16th president, a common heritage, a mission to serve the nation. So with that, I would say that it's really a great privilege to have the opportunity to welcome the VA Secretary, Robert A. McDonald. Secretary McDonald is a 1975 graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point, alumnus of University of Utah, where he earned an MBA. An Army veteran, and both airborne and Ranger qualified, he served with the 82nd Airborne Division. Upon leaving military service, Captain McDonald was awarded the Meritorious Service Medal. In 1980, Secretary McDonald joined Procter &amp; Gamble, as you know, a Fortune 50 company, where he rose through the ranks, become the Chief Executive Officer. I'd like to tell you a little story about him, off script. I met Bob at Duke. We went to one of those basketball games. And I told Bob, I said, "You know, my niece works for you. She's in Toronto. She is a, I would say, mid-level or beginning manager." And he remembered this. He reached out to her, and when he visited Toronto, he met with her. That's the kind of person I know of Bob McDonald, a real people person, but also a great leader. So, when he retired in June 2013, but then nominated by President Obama as the 8th Secretary of Veteran Affairs on June 30, 2014, and confirmed by United Standard on July 29, 2014, I was just elated. I know we've got, the nation's got the right person to lead the Veterans Affairs Department, which is so important, as you know, to this nation. So I can tell you, within just short three months, I watched C-SPAN, and I've seen him testify. Bob has made a huge difference. He's certainly bringing with him the experience of a chief executive, but the passion of somebody who cares about people, and his background as somebody who's been in military. And he comes at a great time, when we need someone there as leadership. So, he's already made many changes. Of course, he also recognized Carolyn Clancy's great, you know, expertise, one of our members, and have worked closely with her. So I would say that we are looking so much forward to your remarks to us, Secretary McDonald. And I wonder if you can come up and, in fact, give us your remarks. Thank you very much.
It really is a thrill to be here today. I want to thank Victor, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to address today's annual meeting. As Victor said, he and I have known each other since he was the Chancellor of the Duke Medical School, and also the CEO of the Duke Medical System. And I happen to be the Chairman of the Fuqua-Duke Business School Board at the same time. We had a lot of fun that night. We were in Cameron Indoor Stadium. We got to see the Duke basketball team play, which is always a great fun. So really, for me, it was wonderful to be able to renew our partnership and do it in the interests of the Institute of Medicine, VA, and the Americans that we serve. Dr. Feinberg, Mr. Bane, Dr. Clancy, and other VA colleagues, distinguished members of the Institute of Medicine, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon, and it's a privilege to be here with you today. As the nation's foremost advisory body in medicine and healthcare, you know that the Department of Veterans Affairs is in the midst of overcoming problems involving access to healthcare. We own them, and we're going to fix them. But I also know that you know that VA has a legacy of excellence, innovation, cutting-edge research, and achievements in healthcare delivery that are broad and historically significant, and those profound and often unrecognized. There's something else. Right now, VA has perhaps its greatest opportunity to enhance care for veterans in our history. Others know that truth as well. Last July, Sloan Gibson, VA's Deputy Secretary, my West Point classmate, and a friend of almost 40 years now, met with Harvey Feinberg, distinguished clinician, healthcare leader, and your former president. When Sloan commented that VA could accomplish more in the next two to three years than we could have in two to three decades, Dr. Feinberg immediately corrected him. "No," he said, "VA can accomplish things now that it never could have accomplished." And we think he's right. We're in an extraordinary position. We have an opportunity to not only right wrongs, but to reframe perceptions about VA by lengthening our lead in areas where we've always excelled, taking the lead in service delivery areas that are lagging, and charting new ground in emerging or evolving areas of healthcare. The problems that we face are serious. The president, the Congress, veteran service organizations, taxpayers, and VA's rank-and-file all understand the need for immediate reforms to achieve three non-negotiable goals, goals we set for ourselves more than two months ago on our Road to Veterans Day. This initiative, Road to Veterans Day, outlines what we intend to accomplish by Veterans Day 2014. It begins with our mission and immediate objective, and that's to better serve and care for those who have borne the battle and for their families and their survivors. From there, we developed a series of goals and actions that enabled the department to move quickly and decisively to do three things: rebuild trust with veterans and stakeholders, improve service delivery focusing on veteran outcomes, and set a course for long-term excellence and reform. Toward that end, I've been on the road. I've traveled to about 35 different facilities in 18 cities. I met with hundreds, if not thousands, of veterans, VA employees, VSOs, and other stakeholders. And I've discussed issues with members of Congress, veteran service organizations, union leadership, and a myriad of other partners. Based on what I've heard and the lessons I've learned about mission-driven corporations, corporations with strong institutional values and good management practices during my 33 years at P&amp;G, we've wasted no time in developing a healthcare blueprint for excellence. This blueprint for excellence is critical to achieving Part III of our Road to Veterans Day initiative, that was setting a course for the long-term excellence and reform. It's VA's template to reestablish the department's preeminence in leadership in American healthcare. It could not have been produced by better, more knowledgeable people, including VA's former Undersecretary for Health, John Perlin, who's completed a short-term assignment at VA, and our interim Undersecretary, Carolyn Clancy, who most of you already know. Their input to this blueprint and their professional advice on the optimal ways to accomplish this goal have been invaluable since I became the Secretary. The blueprint lays out four broad themes and supporting strategies for transformation. First, we have to improve the performance of healthcare now. There's a lot at stake. We deliver 240,000 episodes of care every single day, and more than 90 million scheduled appointments in 2013 alone. And we have to do 400,000 surgical procedures annually, nearly 1,100 surgical procedures every single day. Second, it's imperative that we reset VA's culture to put a high premium on job performance and the strong VA institutional values that support it. Those values include integrity, commitment, advocacy, respect, and excellence, all that form the acronym of ICARE, which are contained on this button that I wear each day. These attributes go to the heart of our mission and dictate how we should employees act. They relate to veterans and each other, and they treat the almost 6.5 million patients we see each year. By living VA's core values, we can go a long way toward overcoming the challenges before us. Third, VA must transition from sick care to healthcare in the broadest sense. And fourth, we must develop efficient, transparent, accountable, and agile business and management processes to support the span of care, services, and programs we deliver. Above all, it's imperative that VA regain and retain a laser-like focus on its customer base. That means everyone from the 90-year-old veteran who crossed Omaha Beach to the 19-year-old who battled insurgents in Afghanistan. That said, VA's mission for change is not only veteran-centric, but veteran-driven, putting our customers in control of their VA experience. The healthcare industry itself is moving toward a more customized, consumer-centric version of primary care access. We call our VA patient experience solution MyVA. It too is part of our overarching Road to Veterans Day strategy. It's called MyVA because that's how we want veterans to describe us, as an organization that belongs to them, provides quality healthcare in ways that they need it, and ways that they want to be served. Let me give you an example of what I mean. Recently, at a national press conference, I gave out my personal cellphone number. It was published and republished by The Washington Post. Thank you. The reason I gave out my cellphone number is because I know veterans are struggling to figure out how to connect with the VA. And then, when they finally get connected, they discover they're connected with only one of our nine lines of business. Now, Procter &amp; Gamble, we were the first company to put a 1-800 number on the back of our package. We did so because we wanted feedback, and we wanted to establish a similar customer-service relationship at VA. One of the things I've recently done is demanded town hall meetings of all of our sites throughout the United States. Initially, when I did this, many of our VA leaders came back and said, "Oh, we can't hold a town hall meeting. We'll hear too many negative comments. People will be upset. They'll be angry." And I said, "Yes, that's exactly why we do them." This kind of customer service operation that we want is first and foremost, it means delivering quality medical care and providing veterans the very best medical outcomes possible. But it also means shaping VA through a better understanding of veterans' needs and preferences, providing a single-entry, user-friendly access so that they can effortlessly navigate VA care and services. Today, we have 14 different websites that require 14 different usernames and passwords. Removing cumbersome processes and procedural obstacles that frustrate users is something we have to do, providing the full spectrum of resources, financial, human, and otherwise, to serve these veterans efficiently and effectively. And last, we need to empower employees at the lowest level possible to respond and react quickly and knowledgeably to veterans at each point of interaction. It's been my point that if we don't have, we don't have a hope of serving veterans if we don't serve our employees well. Now, to do this, we're looking at ways to restructure and reorganize, combine functions, simplify operations, make process improvements, leverage technology, and enhance efficiency and productivity. It's a 360-degree effort designed to present veterans with a seamless, integrated, and responsive VA, no matter where they come to us or how they come to us, whether it's digitally, by phone, or in person. Our goal is simple, and that's to provide quality medicine and first-rate healthcare, deliver with the same proactive, real-time, courteous, coordinated service as the top-ranked customer service companies in the country. The fact is, VA already has that type of service excellence in many areas. For the past decade, the American Customer Satisfaction Index has ranked VA's National Cemetery Administration as the top customer service organization in the nation, public or private, better than Google, better than Lexus, better than all the rest. And since 2004, this same organization has consistently shown that veterans receiving both inpatient and outpatient care give VA higher satisfaction ratings than patients at private hospitals. With the right strategies and action plans in place, there's no reason why we can't scale that performance excellence VA-wide. Right now, one of the biggest challenges we face is the shortage of clinicians and other healthcare professionals. It was an underlying reason for the problems that occurred in Phoenix and elsewhere. And that's why, as a part of a national recruitment effort, I've been going to the nation's medical schools and nursing schools, Duke, UC Davis, UC San Francisco, Dartmouth, University of Vermont, and Johns Hopkins last week, Howard University later this week, and many others in the coming months. I want to personally tell students about VA's great mission, and I will encourage them to join a revitalized Team VA in caring for those who defend us. Audiences everywhere have been welcoming, and interest is high. Now, here's what I tell them. I say, "At the VA, we have the most inspiring mission in government and the best clients in the field of healthcare, both good reasons to work at VA. Beyond our noble and respected mission, the exceptional people we serve, VA offers practical reasons to work for veterans. The recently enacted Veterans Access, Choice, and Accountability Act of 2014 doubled, and I repeat, doubled, the amount of our education debt reduction payment from $60,000 to $120,000. Let us repay your student loan. We offer student loan repayments of up to $10,000 annually with a lifetime cap of $60,000. As well, we offer scholarships and recruitment, relocation, and retention incentives. And as part of the drive to recruit the best and the brightest, we've eased the pay disparity with the private sector, always an issue, through salary increases for VA's physicians and dentists, and we're studying nurses right now. The demand for VA care will not decrease anytime soon. Our nation's been at war for over a decade, and will continue to be caring for many of our severely wounded and ill veterans for decades to come, if not a lifetime. In a still-recovering economy, the number of veterans seeking our services continues to grow steadily, and we will expect it to continue, because as the population gets older, they're going to have a greater need for our care. There'll be more chronic conditions, and they'll be less able to afford care in the private sector. The issue of non-VA care has garnered a lot of attention over the past few months. Yet, for all its potential in solving our current access problems, purchased care is not a replacement for a strong and vital veterans' healthcare system. Veterans need the VA, and Americans everywhere need the VA. Indeed, the global community needs the VA and benefits from the VA. In VA research, VA research leads to major breakthroughs and advances in medical science and care. Post-traumatic stress syndrome, traumatic brain injury are only two of the most recent examples. In training, 70% of America's physicians, 62,000 medical students and residents, 23,000 nurses, and 33,000 other healthcare professionals each year get trained at the VA. And the VA has a highly specialized knowledge and know-how to deliver clinical and rehabilitative care to those who have borne the battle. Just ask a veteran, they want to get their care at the VA. The fact is, whether it's in prosthetics, geriatrics, PTSD or TBI treatment, or polytrauma care, to say nothing of disability and education benefits, home loans, or homeless rescues, and final honors in our national cemeteries, there's no other institution like VA positioned to deliver this broad spectrum of veterans-specific care and services to the 1% of our population that have served the 100% of all of us. The Veterans Access, Choice, and Accountability Act, or Choice Act as it's called, goes a long way toward enabling VA to meet their current demand for care. It provides authorities, funding, and other tools to better serve veterans in the short term and support the long-term scale reforms we're making for our long-term excellence. The law provides $5 billion to hire physicians and other medical staff, and $10 billion to fund additional purchase care while VA builds the internal capability to meet the current demand. But as most of you know, VA has always sponsored non-VA care where it's been needed to respond to extraordinary circumstances, things like where geography's a problem, or where rural veterans can't easily get to our facilities, or technology where it makes sense to refer veterans to great providers for certain highly specialized procedures, or in times like now where we face a shortfall in clinicians, patient support, staff, space, information technology, and more. What's changing with the Choice Care Act is the volume of that care. Since last May, VA has authorized almost 1.2 million referrals for veterans to receive care in the private sector. That's 369,000 more than in the same period in 2013. This growth in purchased care sets the stage for re-envisioning new relationships and energizing existing partnerships between VA and the private sector, as well as other parts of the public sector, for better care, for better health, and for better value. Providing seamless veterans' care is a team sport, and we know we need your help. Purchased care addresses some of VA's current problems, but as important, it opens the doors to other transformative aspects of patient care. In care coordination and interoperability, for example, challenges common to both the public and the private sector healthcare providers. If VA and private providers are caring for the same veteran patient, we're in a position to collaborate, to share information, and to share knowledge. There's a potential to leverage improvements in electronic healthcare records by developing public-private infrastructure and the platform to generate new ways of using patient information and data, new ideas, new approaches, and new solutions for better patient care. Increased purchase care also has the potential for increasing high-value care, particularly in reducing medical waste and redundancies. Here again, because we're working in tandem, there's practical, real-time opportunity to ask ourselves, "How do we prevent costly redundancies in x-rays, MRIs, blood tests, and countless other tests?" More than that, asking, "How do we reduce unnecessary testing period?" It gives us the opportunity to tackle these kinds of issues and develop answers and solutions that have importance across the entire medical community. Again, it all comes down to what Dr. Feinberg said. We have a unique opportunity before us at VA to accomplish things now we never could have accomplished. In addition to non-VA care, the Choice Act covers a lot of ground, everything from expanding survivor benefits to improving the delivery of care for veterans struggling with TBI and the effects of military sexual trauma, to increasing up to 1,500 the number of residents working in VA hospitals, to executive accountability, and much, much more. Employees across the department have rolled up their sleeves, and work is underway to make the changes to VA systems, procedures, and culture that the law requires. We've done a lot, but there's a lot left to do. And if we're to right the wrongs, institute reforms and employee accountability, modernize, and recruit the numbers of healthcare professionals we need, we've got a lot of work to do. We're committed to doing the right thing, delivering the right programs in the right way and at the right time for those special Americans we serve. As we go forward, one thing's clear. VA cannot do what needs to be done and accomplish its goals without a full complement of partners, public, private, and volunteer. We don't have all the answers. We can't operate in a vacuum. No 21st-century organization can. That's why we're aggressively leveraging our existing relationships and affiliations and forging new ones. Here are a few examples. VA is partnering with the Institute of Medicine in a study of access standards and wait-time metrics. We've entered into a first-of-its-kind partnership with Walgreens to provide vaccinations to veterans. Walgreens will share its immunization records with VA to ensure we have a complete patient medical record. We're collaborating on a new nursing academic partnership focused on psychiatric and mental healthcare, a key area of care for the department and for the Department of Defense. We're partnering with the DoD Health Affairs to improve recruitment of recently soon-to-be-discharged military healthcare professionals. We're expanding a pilot program to bring combat medics and corpsmen into VA facilities as clinicians. We're partnering with the Northern Virginia Technology Council to establish a pro bono technology task force to review VA's scheduling system and make recommendations for improvement. We're setting up a consulting board of physicians comprised of the foremost medical minds in the nation to advise me and Carolyn on industry best practices. And there's another critically important reason partnerships are important, and much in the news lately, and that's the emerging situation with Ebola. As part of our healthcare mandate, VA ensures the care of our victims of emergencies or natural disasters that would otherwise overwhelm local healthcare systems and responders. In point, we've responded to every presidentially-declared disaster since 1992, including the 9/11 attack in New York, Hurricane Katrina, the H1N1 influenza pandemic, Haiti earthquake relief, and recently Hurricane Katrina. Just last week, I attended an emergency cabinet meeting before I left Washington on Wednesday afternoon, and an Ebola drill at VA's facility in West Roxbury outside Boston on Friday afternoon. Circumstances demonstrate the power, the value, and the need for an integrated, prepared system when anyone with a possible diagnosis arrives at a medical facility. Equally important, as the Ebola situation is borne out, is the responsibility to protect our healthcare workers across the nation. Partnerships are critically important to making sure this happens. In my less than three months at VA, one thing stands out as I've traveled around the country, and that's the goodwill and support shown by the medical community to VA, to its mission, and to its achievements. People like Ken Kaiser, Jim Madera, Harvey Feinberg, Matt Nathan, John Perlin, and so many, many others have come from both the private and the public sectors, have all expressed publicly their desire to speak out and to write the record in telling the VA story. We're taking advantage of their offer. Right now, VA is in the process of creating a VA alumni group, a Friends of the VA Committee of sorts. Our thought is to gather together interested leaders in medicine and healthcare industry, and brief them regularly on VA operations, initiatives, and performance, and solicit their input and their assistance. One of our objectives is to insert a degree of balance and truth to the rather one-sided conversation about VA care and services. And so I'd like to invite you, as members of the Institute of Medicine, to consider becoming a part of this. becoming a part of this initiative. We want and need your authoritative advice, and we know that 70% plus of you have received your training at the VA. We seek your input as we move forward in implementing the Veterans Access, Choice, and Accountability Act. We welcome your participation and your collaboration across the spectrum of care, and I personally look forward to collaborating with you. In closing, I'd like to thank you, I'd like to thank Victor, for giving me this opportunity to speak with you and your distinguished colleagues this afternoon. I want to thank the Institute for its record of work in improving the healthcare of Americans and the people around the world, and I look to your recommendations and your influence in improving VA healthcare for veterans. Thank you very much.
That was outstanding. Just terrific.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're very kind. Thank you.[1778.47]